It's seven o'clock or a little after. We'll call the meeting to order. Can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cameron.
Here.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Collier.
Here.
Mr. Beesold is absent. Mr. Peterman.
Here.
Mr. Blau.
Here.
Would there be a young person who would like to step up and help lead us in the pledge to the flag, right there? Just, just... Can everybody please rise for the pledge to the flag? Just come up.
Okay.
You all right? You ready? Okay. One, two, three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion for the minutes of the last meeting, please.
I noticed one under Visitors and Communications Section of Martin City Public Works Committee meeting is scheduled for August 6th, 2019. That can't be right.
We met without you. I'm kidding.
So, I mean, that's the only amendment. I'm not sure how that should read, but after what the Waterworks Road conversation happened, we ended up at paragraph six that a public works meeting is scheduled for August 6th.
Yeah, we did meet on August 6th.
Oh, okay. Oh, we did.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was our last committee meeting.
Okay, all right. I'll move to approve then.
Is there a second? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Blau.
Aye.
Okay. We're to the Visitors and Communications Section, and I've got these cool parade awards up here, but before we do that, we've got some badge pinings to happen, and we thought, since you all are here, maybe you get to see the police officers get their new badges. So, chief, take it away.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, tonight, we are very lucky and very fortunate to be promoting two of our officers. Tonight, Detective Derek Bobble will be promoted to the rank of Sergeant, and Sergeant William Hunt will be promoted to the rank of Lieutenant. So, I would like to start with Derek. Please stand, please. I promised Derek I wasn't going to tell the story, but I got up here and I changed my mind. Derek started with us in 2012, and we sent him to the police academy, where he became instantly famous because Law Enforcement Magazine chose to follow Derek throughout his entire academy experience, which at the time, I think, was like 36 weeks or something crazy. They cut it back down because it was way too long. But they followed him throughout his experience, and at the end of his times, his portrait was on the front of Law Enforcement Magazine for every month he directed it. He came out a celebrity.
Yay.
That's what I was going to say, but I just... Derek's been with us for seven years. He's a great guy. We love having him on the department. He's a good friend. He's a good teacher. He's a good mentor. He's the type of guy that you could give him any task, and he'll get it done. You don't have to worry about... Derek has served as a training officer for us. He just finished a stint as a detective, and he also helps run our evidence room. Tonight, he'll be promoted to Sergeant, and depending on which one to pull out of my pocket, it could be me.
I mean, I'll say lieutenant.
You might skip here. He will be promoted to Sergeant. His new badge number will be 4318, and he will be our second shift patrol sergeant. And I'll go ahead and pin this one. I don't see... Derek's wife is nice enough to be at the collarless, so she's got a couple of work that I have. And Derek's wife is going to pin all his collar straps, which signifies that he is a sergeant person.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys, for the opportunity to continue working here. My wife and I love this city. We moved here last year after many years of trying to get in as a common experience here. It's a wonderful city, and I love working here. They have a great department. They have a great chief, so I truly enjoy my job, and I really just want to thank my fellow officers and all the guys that make this place great, obviously my family, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mayor and members of council. Next, we have Sergeant William Hunt, being promoted to Lieutenant. William has been with us since 2003. He started with South King in 2001 and did a couple of years there, and realized this was the place that he wanted to be, so he came home to Fort Thomas and has been with us ever since 2003. Will is also another guy that I've given him a ton of stuff. He's got a big pole plate. He's been a field training officer. He currently runs our field training program. He's a media officer, so he gets to deal with anyone who calls and asks questions about what's going on. He recently oversaw and completed our accreditation process. He served as a crime scene investigator, and he also runs our crime scene CSI camp for the summer that we offer to middle schoolers. So, again, great friend, great guy, one of those guys who give them a ton of stuff, and you know they're well taken care of, and you never have to worry about what he's giving. He currently is in charge of our uniforms, which in this area of the country is a very fun process because Cincinnati and the postal service are close with small fish, and sometimes that can be a frustrating job, but he's doing a great job with it. So, tonight, William has been promoted to Lieutenant. He will be our first shift patrol lieutenant, and his new badge number is 4213. Lieutenant Chris Carver is here. He's going to pin his flowers on. The three of us started together, so this is what we'll decide on tonight. We've been together for 18, 19 years, so it's not a long...
I may not be as eloquent as Sergeant thought, but Mayor, council, thank you again for this. This is, you know, I feel like the hometown kid that's done well, and I love being here. I love... I grew up here, and I appreciate how many of you guys are on my list, and it's just, it's very proud of them to continue to be here and make it this far. My family's here. I appreciate them. I appreciate all the guys I work with. You know, they make us look good. They make... Working for chief is just truly an honor, being here again. Well, best thanks to my mom, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, and congratulations. Okay, and now the fun stuff. Time for the awards. Let's see. All right. We have... Do I have to do it in this way? Yes. Okay. This award goes to the best representation of the theme. Third place goes to Jixin Chucks. We were...
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. All right. Best representation of the theme. Second place goes to the Veterinary Medical Center of Fort Thomas. We were... All right. And first place, our best representation of the theme goes to Fort Thomas Forest Conservancy. All right. All right. Most entertaining, third place, Highlands High School Marching Band. I was a member of the Highlands High School. I played on your phone, so I got to be in the front of the parade so I wouldn't hit anybody with the flag, so I will accept on behalf of the Highlands High School. All right. I'm going to take this one. All right. Most entertaining, second place, Dance Round. All right. All right. There you go.
Oh, sure. It didn't last long.
All right.
They don't trust you.
They don't trust you. Okay. Most entertaining, first place, H2MC Lawn Chair Brigade.
We have to ask them to continue.
Please continue.
Honestly, I don't know how you guys do it in that heat if you keep it up. That's pretty amazing.
But everybody loves them.
Oh, yes. All right. Most original, third place, Campbell County Land Search and Rescue. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. All right. Most original, second place, United States Submarine Veterans. Say that a little bit.
We're in a lot of parades in the area. This is the best in Tri-State. I just...
All right. Most original, first place, Tom Rettin Heating and Air.
Thank you. Well, we wanted to, just to, I've just make sure we were announcing, you know, the theme was the Art of Kindness, and that was after Chuck Kower, because he was always doing the play Kindness, and then it was the Art of Kindness, and it turned out to be Sarah Hamel. But this year, we honored others that we know that we had been able to get in the parade, and I just wanted to mention the parade honorees. We had Burton D. Beckany, Dan and Flo Gray, Rita Walters, Betsy Evans, and Lee Cordray. Every one of these have done lots for the city for a long time. We just wanted to make sure that we got them all in there, so that way we had to honor all of them at the same time. But then, there's a lot of others to thank. There's Jim, my husband, Gary Schwabach, Marty Meyer, Ken Grio, Guy Konzer from the high school. They were very nice to let us use all of that this year. David Thiel helped with the flyover. Fred Otto, I could not do the politicians without him. The Highland United Methodist Church opens the doors, lets us use the front steps. The City of Fort Thomas for all the help that they had done, the police department, to the Rock Nations, helping with the gray marshal honorees. We have the three judges that does this, and we even have the division leaders and all the participants, but this year, I've never seen so many people that have been in the parade in my life. There was just tons of people, and they just made it so much fun, and you and I have a good time doing it.
Thank you so much for what you've done. It's great.
We are truly blessed in Fort Thomas. I mean, this is a great city. Everybody loves being here and looking pride parade. That just shows what we have as a community. So, thank you all for being here. Welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. If you'd like to head home and do something else, you may do that as well. I thank you all so much.
All right. Moving on with the agenda. Oh, we are still in Visitors and Communications. If there are anybody that like to address council on any issue, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us what you have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for allowing me to come and speak tonight. My name is Terry Webster. I live in 14 Burns Cliff Court. Resident of our county for 15 years. I moved here in 2000 when I accepted the call of being pastor at one of our churches a position I retired from in May of 2018. And quite simply, I'm asking my city, Fort Thomas, to consider adopting a fairness ordinance, which will provide protections to citizens and visitors in our city who identify in the LGBTQ community. I admit that this request is partly inspired by our friends up the road in Dayton, who just passed a similar ordinance. This is an ordinance that's been passed by 12 other cities in the Commonwealth, from large cities such as Louisville and Lexington to towns as small as Pico, which has a population of about 350 people. The Commonwealth currently has an anti-discrimination law, which makes it unlawful to discriminate in areas of employment, financial transactions, housing, and public accommodations on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, gender, or disability. Missing from this very specific list are any protections for those of the LGBTQ community. That means that anyone in our community who loses a job, who refuse service at a restaurant or bank, be turned away from renting an apartment, or buying a condo, or a house, and I don't want that for my adopted hometown, especially as we're experiencing new housing down in Fort, and also with the plant development here in Midtown. Now, I know a lot of people like to shy away from addressing this because it's viewed as political, but I don't. For me, it's an issue of fairness, something that is the right thing to do for people in our community who may have no legal protection in case they are discriminated against. And passing this ordinance would simply give them the same legal protection against discrimination as everybody else. Now, I'm not an expert on this. We are here tonight, we are representing the Fairness Campaign, Chris Hartman. If we need expert advice, and I know who would like to speak, rather, I'm simply speaking as a proud father of a son who is part of the LGBTQ community, and I'm asking this because I want for my son the same legal protection that I have, that I suspect most of us have if we are discriminated against. And that's what's fair. That's the right thing to do. Once again, thank you very much. I appreciate you all being open to listening to people, and I hope and trust that you all consider this your advice. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Council members, I'm Chris Hartman, who Terry referenced. I am the executive director of the Fairness Campaign, which is the statewide LGBTQ civil rights organization here in Kentucky. We worked most recently in Dayton, and of course, I've worked very closely with the Northern Kentucky Fairness Organization, which also puts on Northern Kentucky Pride, and what I hear is the second-best parade in Pride Parade that we ever stayed in every year. And I just wanted to come and offer myself and the Fairness Campaign as a resource to you, Mr. Mayor, and to the council members. I'm hoping that you will consider adopting a fairness ordinance. As Terry has already stated, there are a number of cities throughout Kentucky that have adopted their own discrimination laws, and that is because Kentucky is one of the 28 states across the nation, including Ohio, that do not currently have in their state civil rights laws sexual orientation and gender identity, which would cover LGBTQ folks in the areas of employment, housing, and public accommodations discrimination. Louisville was the first in Kentucky to pass the ordinance. This marks the 20th anniversary this year of Louisville passing that ordinance. Lexington as well passed an ordinance in 1999. Interestingly, Henderson in western Kentucky also passed an ordinance in 1999, repealed it 18 months later, and then passed it again a month and a half ago on the 20th anniversary of the original passage. So, now, we've got 12 cities, Louisville, Lexington, Covington was third in 2003. Terry referenced the tiny Appalachian town of Vico, population 334, formerly the smallest city in all of America. With a gay rights law, we were supplanted by Thurmond, West Virginia, all five residents voting for fairness in Thurmond. Then also Frankfurt, Morehead, Danville, Midway, Paducah, Maysville, and then most recently Henderson, and of course Dayton. But that only covers approximately 28% of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and that means that everywhere else, including here, unfortunately, that type of discrimination that Terry has talked about, being fired from a job, being denied a place to live, or being evicted, or being denied service at a place of public accommodation or a park, that type of discrimination could still be legal. The fairness ordinances are simple typically. Your city attorney, I'm certain, would craft an ordinance that works for your community here. Sometimes, cities create a human rights commission, which deals with the enforcement of such ordinances. Sometimes, in cities that don't have a human rights commission, like Dayton, like Morehead and many others, typically, it is the city administrator who would intake complaints and try to mediate the situation. Almost all of these discrimination complaints are resolved through mediation, so there is very seldom an administrative hearing that would have to be held, but in the case of not having a human rights commission, if there weren't administrative hearing, basically, the council would serve as the adjudicating body to those complaints. We, I've communicated with council member Bowman and have shared a compendium of materials that include model ordinances from other cities like Morehead and Dayton, and of course, Covington, but then also draft ordinances that the Kentucky Commission on Human Rights has drafted, both for cities with and without human rights commissions. So, I'm happy to share that information with you, Mayor Haas, or any other council members. Of course, council member Bowman could share it as well. We would love for Fort Thomas to be city number 13 with fairness, though I got to let you know, there are a number of other cities that are jockeying for that position, even as we speak, even up here in northern Kentucky, though I think maybe central Kentucky city there might claim number 13. But I was there the night that Covington issued the challenge to other cities in the area. You know, for a long, long time, for more than a decade, they were the only city in northern Kentucky with these discrimination protections. We would love to see every city here in northern Kentucky extend these same protections. So, I'm happy to answer any questions now, but I'm also very happy to be at your all's disposal at any time that you need for anything that you might be...
Just, yeah. One quick question for you, since you're involved in this. What is the effort at the state to do this at a state level, since that's where the rest of it's all handled?
It is literally my full-time job.
Okay.
I am the lobbyist in Frankfurt that has worked on the statewide fairness ordinance that has been proposed since the year 2000. So, next year will mark the 20th anniversary of the statewide fairness law being passed. What percentage of senators and representatives do you think are signed on to the statewide fairness ordinance?
No idea.
25. So, not 50 yet, and certainly not 100, but 25% is much more than the 10% or less when I started my job, and this includes support from both sides of the eye. A lot of people sort of still view this maybe as a partisan issue. I will let you know that we have long enjoyed broad bipartisan opposition on this issue, but now, now, we are starting to enjoy some great bipartisan support. So, there are both Republicans and Democrats in the State General Assembly, in the Senate and the House, who have supported this measure. However, the will of leadership has not been to bring it forward. We've only ever had two informational-only hearings in the House Judiciary Committee, which I thought tooth and nail to get several years ago. So, I think it's going to be five, seven, potentially even 10 years before the state legislature will actually take this up, but the way that they will do it is by the conversation happening in everybody's hometowns. And, you know, when I started my job, we only had the three cities with fairness ordinances. Now, we've got a dozen. I would imagine we'll get 15 or more by the end of the year. That's the type of thing that will create the tipping point by which the state will actually adopt the statewide fairness ordinance.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And I'll give you my card, Mr. Mayor, and anybody else. Feel free.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council? Come on up, please.
Good evening. My name is David Roth. I'm residing at 106 Rockton Avenue in Fort Thomas, and wasn't really prepared for remarks this evening, but felt compelled after the previous two speakers. I just wanted to say how much I support a fairness ordinance and how much it means to me personally. I grew up in Fort Thomas, went to Johnson and Highlands, moved away for a time, and then returned back to Fort Thomas because I missed it, and I miss my family and the community. Was luckily enough that the Supreme Court ruled in favor of same-sex marriage and was able to be legally married to my husband, Greg Tryncamp, Grant County, and we are now proud residents of Fort Thomas. I will say that this, on the face of it, looks like a political question, and I'm sure there will be opposition in the city, and it will not be able to be welcomed by many people on council, but I want you to know that it isn't just a political question, it's also a personal question, and it has moral and ethical implications. When I was younger, I was turning from a job in Kentucky for being gay, and to this day, it's still something that I think about. It's still something that haunts me. And when something like that happens to you, it seems like, oh, just get over it, find another job, find another apartment, find another house, but it affects you on a deep level. It's a way of saying that you aren't welcome in a community, that you're not enough, that you aren't valuable, that you don't have worth, and it hurts, and it leaves a lasting impact. So, I would urge you that when it gets tough, and when people get up here, and they will, and they will make arguments that are against this, I urge you to think about the people that this will help and the signal that it will send to people that this is a welcoming community that's open to all and is a great place to live regardless of your background. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council?
Totally different subject. I've been here before on the same thing, Rick Wagner, 67 Holland. We're still having a lot of issues with parking and trucks. it's still, I remember getting a ticket in the North End on Rosemont for parking a half ton Chevy van with the logo on it. And this is a whole, you know, big rig. And everybody wants to see it, and it's parked there several times a week.
Chief, do you know what's happening over there, and if they've had any abilities to improve that situation?
You call once there, right?
I've called them several times. Of course, I called Easter Sunday, no, not that I've never seen, but Easter Sunday I called, wanting to go to church, and it was car blocking my driveway, and they came at 3:30 that afternoon. We finally had my brother come and get me, my wife and things.
Anytime there's a new year party, we still dispatch, we'll send an officer right away. If they're not, that's a late at night.
You would think, though, if you see a semi parked on a couple of streets, isn't that illegal? Okay, well, I don't think this could put a ticket or hit a code.
Continue to call as much as you can, usually people, as far as parking on both sides.
Now, that's the other thing, and our fire chief said he thought it was a danger. And he said, well, what do you think your people on your street are going to think if false alarm goes? I said, I don't really care if it's a danger, plus the fact that the people that have parked on our side of the, the one side of the street, none of them lived there. They were all in the apartments up at the corner, two points of them, I think it's 51. They park no vehicles in all the garages and all the parking in the back. They got one girl that parks, pulls right off the street, stops, and nobody else. They're all parked down, all the way down past us. Now, my car got hit a few minutes ago again out in front, and, you know, I don't know if you remember when Kathy, my neighbor across the street, somebody came in, and I felt bad because they turned around in my driveway, backed out, took the whole front of the Highland draw, and took off. And it's off. And then Saturday, when you, around Saturday, when the park, we called Saturday, they did come, tried to find out who it was, but came home in the middle of the night, parked across the street. Seven o'clock Mr. Rambler went out, it's still sitting and running. Five o'clock that afternoon, it's still sitting out there running. So the cruiser came, and they're looking around, and finally the guy came, why on whom really late about four, I guess I forgot to turn it off.
Oh, wow.
You know, these are the kind of people we're getting in up there. And my wife read it, and she says, why don't we just start looking? Because, you know, we had two parts wrecked of our own park down the street, and we just don't park. I just, I donated the old skirt, the old, I just took it over St. Vincent, it just gave it to me, so, you know, it's wrecked, you can do whatever you want, it's still dry and all. I'm just really getting fed up.
Well, I'm really sorry about your situation. I know you've been here several times talking about it, and as the chief said, you know, when you see it, go ahead and call, and just keep calling, because then there'll be a record of how many times there's problems, and we'll see what we can do. Yeah, my apologies.
It's just, you know, and like you said, last Tuesday, we got another one parked behind the driveway again.
Yeah.
They, you know, I want them to kind of paint old driveways free, I think it should be at least three feet back.
Well, if you call and they're illegally parked, and we start ticketing folks, that, maybe that will get the word around.
Those are the ones that'll come back and do stuff to you, too. If you see some of these people, they have some issues. Like this one old red convertible that comes down a lot, you know, it's got windows that are taped up, plastic open and that, you just wonder, it's, you know, they always say we should watch vehicles in our neighborhood for, you know, you never know where, because every, every Friday night, one, two in the morning, they're all turning around in my driveway and parking everywhere, wrong way, you know, that's another one. If they just come in and they stick it up in my front yard part of the way, that should be taken as soon as a cruiser comes down, I think, because it's, first off, it's illegally parked facing the wrong way on the wrong side of the street.
Yeah.
But, like I said, nobody on our whole side of the street really parks on the street because we can't.
Yeah.
And then plus the fact we get wrecked if we do. But in my instance, I got a little extra problem because the people across the street have four trucks, and we've got a telephone pole right at the edge of our driveway to try to make that turn out of there with a truck parked on.
Yeah.
And it parked on this side right next to the drive.
Okay.
It's just, it's getting harder and harder.
Yeah. I appreciate you letting us know about it.
If you can hear something, I'm called for it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm forth from 127 Floralkor. And mayor and council come to you tonight in part as a person of faith, as a pastor at a congregation in Camp Springs, rooted in a tradition of inclusion and hospitality. And so in part, I come tonight to be part and voice of, in addition to the voices of the citizens tonight, but in part be a voice for those who have lost their voice or whose voices have increasingly been taken away throughout our world. So I come on their behalf, but also as an appreciative resident of Fort Thomas as well, because we all know that Fort Thomas has a reputation. I was reminded of that reputation the other day, last week, when I took my two boys to the first day of school at Johnson Valley. So that meant we had to walk behind the high school along the football field, which far into the end zone tied to the chain link fence as a banner that reads, "Tradition starts here." We all know with children in our lives that Fort Thomas has gathered as a community for generations to provide exceptional, safe opportunities for our children, academics, athletics, extracurricular opportunities, so that they, as individuals, can see their own value, but also those are ways that we can continue to empower them to reach their full potential. We're not just a community gathered for uplifting our youth, but even those in our city that are later on in their years, late even into retirement, continue to be a part of our community because they too see that they are valued as individuals, as a part of our gathered community. And really, we know that thinking of fairness, thinking of safety, thinking of community is a part of who we are, it's a core part in our DNA, and that's where our namesake comes from. There was a time when people would come to this place, no matter what war or battle or chaos was going on beyond the city limits, that they would come to this place if they could just find the tower, they'd find a place of refuge and a place of safety. And some of you may be saying, sure, you know, we're not a Louisville, we're not a Lexington, you know, we don't want to be a Dayton, a Covington, or a Paducah. And I agree, because we are Fort Thomas. We are a community that has a longstanding tradition of providing rich, abundant opportunities where individuals, young and old, and hopefully everyone in between, regardless of the color of the skin or who they choose to love, has abundant opportunities to see their own value and to be empowered to reach their full potential. And so as leaders, I know in the recent past, you have made some challenging decisions for the sake of the future and health of this community. And so as you've heard, this may not be an easy decision, you decide to continue, which I hope you do, with the discernment process toward the next step. But I believe as leaders of this great city, that you have a great opportunity to extend our tradition, to help us write that next chapter that started so long ago, that we continue to be a community gathered together where each individual who's here can see their own value and can be empowered with all sorts of abundant opportunities and safety as they reach their full potential. And so this may seem like something new, but I really think this is something that Fort Thomas as a gathered community has always been about. And really, that's who we are. Fort Thomas is about community, I mean, community is our business, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council? I have two other items for visitors communications. I have a proclamation for the American Payroll Association. Is there anyone here representing the American Payroll Association? I would just add it to the record then. Excuse me. We also received a letter from Bill and Kathy Tipton. Did everybody on council receive, is that correct? Okay, we'll add that to the record, and Ron, you saw that, so we may want to look at that traffic situation. All right, we will move on, move on to reports of officers. Yes?
I'd like to, while the visitor's still here, go ahead and make a motion of a referral labor law, license the idea of a fairness ordinance to investigate further.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. All right. Reports, reports of officers, sorry. Fire department.
Mayor, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have, if you can.
Okay. Any questions about the fire report? Okay, police report.
We'll wait. We can proceed to file.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you, Ken. I'm just trying to move it along here. Is there a second to that?
Yeah, I second.
No, okay, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
I'm trying to get through that. I'm choking up here.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
All right, now police report.
Mayor, just real quick, this summer we brought back CSI camp. For years, we all went up to 67 to be a parent at our school, and we just had a couple years of quite interesting material we have at the school. But this year we came back, we had 20 kids, they taught several classes Monday through Friday. That's one of those things, they really get to get their hands dirty, they get to test the stuff we have, take pictures, learn about DNA and evidence and how the police officers do what they do at crime scenes. So it was a very nice week, we're happy to be involved, and I'm glad we're back. And then secondly, just quickly, we received a thank you letter from a group of ladies who received defensive tactics training from our department, and I just want to point out that officers love going to training for themselves, but they love to give it to where it's appropriate. So we did that as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the chief?
Chief, I have one question. I noticed an uptick in theft reports for this previous month. Could you comment, was that related to, sort of, issues or issues?
Um, theft-related July, July is up to here?
Yeah, well, it says December, but I think it means July, right?
Uh, we had, you know, there you go. We had a kickball break-ins.
Okay.
And that was definitely the same thing, not the ordinary, it's just your typical three cars under the road changes.
Okay. Were the cars locked or unlocked?
They're unlocked.
They're unlocked.
Almost always unlocked.
Everybody who leaves a car unlocked, raise your hand, don't do it anymore.
I feel they might.
Oh, okay. But the garage is open, right? Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions for the chief? Entertained a motion?
We can proceed to file.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
All right, city administrators report.
I just have a few update items, all good things that are going on in the community, and some of them are kind of target dates for different projects. The first thing I wanted to mention was, under the city's pedestrian safety initiative, we have successfully installed all the rapid flashing beacon devices that were approved before we got to our school season. So the new installations were at the St. Thomas Crosswalk and the middle school were the last two that we had to install. So all four locations that were approved on the state router end, of course, our first one was at Hoyer. We continue to look at enhancements with our pedestrian crossings throughout our community, but I know that was an initiative of council, and it was a long time to get to today.
We need to push the game.
Yeah, well, and, and number Bowman, that is something that we work with our SRO, and I know Zach Roffler will be in the schools, and so educating is part of it, educating our public, talking about it, exercising it, because I've seen that as well, aware individuals walk up, and we're not necessarily aware of the opportunity to push the button and make it, make it a better, safer environment for them. But we do work with our schools, we did a video last year, they take the classes out there and actually show them, they work with our crossing guards, with our police department. So it's all part of the educational process, and it's just as important. So we'll continue to do those things, and the community can help in that way by doing it and adhering to those things. Just a couple of other projects to update, our, we need to come up with a better name, our shelter three project in Tower Park, we kind of tease about it, but the third shelter that was not included in the upgrades in Tower Park, of course, has been approved by this council and funded. That project is out for bid for a reconstruction of the shelter itself at a different location, and of course, we did a comprehensive plan of that whole area down there. But we're expecting bids back, and this council should see those bids at your next meeting. That would include a shelter and a small restroom facility next to the shelter in that vicinity down there, according to the design, and all the other work that will go with the upgrades will be continued through the course of the winter. That project completion timeline is March 1st, so we're hopeful to have that whole area pretty much completed by spring of next year. Along with that, we have a separate contract that's out for bid for the upgrade of the tennis courts. We're looking to do a resurfacing, which is not in the traditional sense of a resurfacing asphalt, but it's a surfacing of the tennis courts, new lines, filling the cracks, and really upgrading the surface play area. That's out for bid, and you should see that in the middle of September for your second meeting in September. The North Fort Thomas Avenue sidewalk project, the grant funds were released, and of course, that's under a federal funding project, and they are doing easement acquisition at this time, and we're very hopeful that that process is timely, that allows us to hit a construction season for next year in the spring, to have that project completed with the sidewalk. Just a second note on that one, the city of Dayton also received a ward of a grant that would connect at the point where we terminate at Third Corporation Line, and they had a project coming up from Seventh Avenue, so they got funded for the middle section. So it will be continuous between the two cities, which is really great.
That's awesome.
They're going to go through the same process?
Yes.
These acquisitions.
Oh, yeah, they're, that middle section for them is behind where we are, but their first section is kind of paralleling timeline of ours. We've even talked to them about maybe bidding that together or similar, so that maybe the same contractor has that responsibility for both projects. And then the only other thing we have out of committee with buildings and utilities we did in RFQ, and we have that available to put on the street, we request for qualifications for potential look at the city building and upgrades in the city building. So we'll be setting up a process to interview those possible candidates. That's all I have. Any questions?
All right, any questions?
Ron, one question, old business. So Alexandria Circle problems, any update on their progress? I know at one point they said July or August timeframe, and then part two of that is, is there going to be an open house to the public when one is complete? Now, that was discussed at one point.
Great question. It's an exciting project, and they, I love that the developer is very optimistic. So when he calls me, it's just the next month, because they're not done in July, so the end of August, they're not ready. I think they're realistically looking at probably the end of September before they would have an occupancy. We also talked to them about having an open house, and I think they're, you know, they're accepting of that possibility, so we'll arrange that. I think the public is curious, and I think the history is there, and they want to celebrate what they've been able to accomplish there. It's tough to get back there now, and I know people walk back there, and it's really difficult. There's a lot of activity back there, they're making a lot of progress, but the utility work that remains is the work with Duke, so they still have the gas line and the underground utility. And then there's a fair amount of road work that needs to be done before it's really passable, enough for somebody to occupy space back there. So they're making great progress, but the timeline is pushed back, mostly because of the development area is not completed with utility. So the units themselves are pretty far along, some of them.
Good. Merchants of music. We may want to be prepared for people coming back there.
Oh, yes. Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
We request for qualifications for potential look at the city building and upgrades in the city building. So we'll be setting up a process to interview those possible candidates. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions?
Ron, one question, old business. So Alexandria Circle Palms, any update on their progress? I know at one point they said July or August timeframe, and then part two of that is, is there going to be an open house to the public when one is complete? I don't know, that was discussed at one point.
Great question, exciting project, and they, I love that the developer is very optimistic. So when he calls me, it's just the next month, because they're not done in July, so the end of August, they're not ready. I think they're realistically looking at probably the end of September before they would have an occupancy. We also talked to them about having an open house, and I think they're, you know, they're accepting of that possibility, so we'll arrange that. I think the public is curious, and I think the history is there, and they want to celebrate what they've been able to accomplish there. It's tough to get back there now, and I know people walk back there, and it's really difficult. There's a lot of activity back there, they're making a lot of progress, but the utility work that remains is the work with Duke, so they still have the gas line and the underground utility. And then there's a fair amount of roadwork that needs to be done before it's really passable, enough for somebody to occupy a space back there. So they're making great progress, but the timeline is pushed back, mostly because of the development area is not completed with utility. So the units themselves are pretty far along, some of them.
Good. Merchants of music, we may want to be prepared for people coming back there.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Ron, could you give us an update on where we are with the street resurfacing program for this year?
Sure. TMS is the contractor that was awarded the Vernon Lane portion of the project, they are actually scheduled to start next week, and they have indicated that they would be done in a week or two weeks with that portion of it. Regler is our contractor for the paving. Our city crews will be finishing on Ohio and Ridgeway with the sidewalk and curb work, probably in that same timeframe, so within a couple of weeks, it'll be available. Regler's indicated that they are mid to late September, we're trying to push them up on schedule, so.
Is the paving of the Alexandria surface, I mean, part of Alexandria, just separate?
No, that's in the same bid, and it's ready, and they know that. That's one of the ones we're really pushing hard for, is to get the base down. So our crews, our general services crews, when they're completed on Ohio and Ridgeway, will be ready for curb work on the areas in Tower Park.
Excellent. That's great.
Anything else?
All right, report of committees, report law, labor, and license.
The law, labor, license committee met today before council to discuss the golf cart ordinance. If you were here last month, you may have heard that we are under discussion of implementing a golf cart ordinance in Fort Thomas. What this would allow for is that KRS currently allows for cities in Kentucky to allow golf carts on their streets. We can modify the existing regulations of KRS, so they're pretty stringent, we can't get more broad, we continue to narrow them. So a lot of discussion today was on increased safety, so what's needed for Fort Thomas? We talked about speed limits, everything, and also, one of the biggest, best discussions were actually from Mark, and Mark talked about, how can this be part of a bigger plan to really kind of slow Fort Thomas traffic down, make Fort Thomas a more walkable community? I know it may sound counterintuitive, to have golf carts and walkability in the same sentence, but the idea is getting people out of cars, into golf carts, into walking, into bicycles, so it's kind of a start for maybe future discussion. However, there's some more questions on safety and fines, so if you didn't comply with these regulations, what would actually happen to you? So the ordinance is going to be under further discussion, and hopefully next month, we have a final first draft for the first reading next month.
All right, thank you. All right, do we have any unfinished business or new business? We are done, we are down to finance committee report on disbursements. Now that you're coughing like I was earlier. Yeah, mine's allergies, I don't know what hurts.
I swallowed water down the wrong side. Okay. Report of disbursements, July eleventh through August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. General fund, two hundred thirty-three thousand, nine hundred fifty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Tower Park fund, three thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-nine cents. Public Works KDOT fund, fifty-three thousand, ninety dollars and fifty-seven cents. Reoccurring debt service fund, one thousand one hundred forty dollars and eighty-eight cents. CBD revitalization, six thousand ninety dollars and two cents. Waste fees, eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty-six cents. Police and fire pension fund, one thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars and ninety-two cents. Total, three hundred ninety thousand, one hundred thirteen dollars and forty-nine cents. We, the undersigned members of the finance committee, recommend that warrants numbered six oh three seven through six two two oh be approved, and the treasurer be authorized to issue checks for their payment. Mr. Peterman, chairperson, Mr. Cameron member.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Blau.
Quick question. The CBD, isn't that soon to retire, that service, the sixty-nine? Isn't that close to being done?
No, it's not. Twenty thirty-one?
Oh, which extended it.
That goes out. Twenty thirty-one, I think.
Twenty thirty. So we've got a lot on that.
All right. Ordinances, waste renewal fee.
Ordinance number O thirteen, two thousand nineteen, an ordinance establishing and fixing the amount of service charges for the collection and removal of solid waste in curbside residential recycling for the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, from September first, two thousand nineteen, through August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. This ordinance sets forth the charges for the collection of solid waste in residential recycling, which charges shall be levied against property owners.
Just FYI, the annual charge for residential curbside pickup is a hundred and sixty-seven dollars from Rumpke that passes on to the resident, so it's like three dollars and twenty cents a week. So that's the new charge for the next two years, I believe. All right, that's, entertain a motion for approval on that. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Blau.
Okay, resolution R O two, two thousand nineteen, Campbell County Emergency Operations Plan.
Resolution R O two, two thousand nineteen, a resolution of the Board of Council and the City of Fort Thomas, adopting the Campbell County Emergency Operations Plan and Support Plans.
We need approval for that, so entertain a motion.
I'm moved to proceed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Blau.
All right, resolution R O three for body armor.
Resolution R O three, two thousand nineteen, a resolution of the City of Fort Thomas, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to make application for and upon approval to enter into an agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by KOHS to facilitate and administer the project and to act as the authorized correspondent for this project.
Motion.
I'm moved to proceed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Blau.
And we have six executive orders appointing police stuff, which doesn't...
There's no action.
No action, executive order six, appointing William Martin as a police recruit. O seven, appointing Chris Harris as a police officer. Eight, appointing Brandon Vance as a police officer. Nine, appointing William Hunt, police lieutenant, which we saw tonight.